Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025 at 6:45 PM. Roll call. Brineers here. Newman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Yates?
Present.
Discussion and possible recommendations of the Village Board regarding payment of bills. Brenda?
All right, there is some, not as many bills this month as things seem like, but it is early in the month, so. Baker Tilly is part of the audit stuff that we just went through a couple of weeks ago, so we got one of their billings. It's, it's broken down between sewer water, general, things like that. GFL is a double payment for the last two months. We have trouble getting their bills. They finally figured out postage thing. Mid-City, the pay application tax is from last year that was supposed to be paid. There was some stuff between the USDA and Village. We weren't sure who was paying, so I'm paying that out to finalize that. The Motorola one is the use of the HEARFIL funds that we had allocated for radios. Our insurance premiums are renewed beginning April 1st, so we have those bills in there.
Is that for a year?
Yes, yeah, April to April. And then the Village of Sussex, we have the clean water loan that was due, and then there's also the rehab where they're updating the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, that one is pretty high.
I thought Benhami Falls was going to be paying for that.
Everybody pays for that. Everybody has our.
Pay a portion of it.
They do.
Yeah.
No further discussion. I will entertain a motion to accept those as presented by Brenda.
All second.
You're going to motion entertain a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the bills presented by Brenda. All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
We have a motion to set into adjourn. And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Village of Lanin Village Board meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM. Please remove your headgear, silence your phones, and stand for the pledge. Roll call. We've got Lake.
Here.
Galatola Roby.
Here.
Newman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Brineer?
Here.
Summers?
Here.
And Yates is present. All present. Statement of public notice?
Has been posted.
And five, discussion of possible action on reading correction and approval of the minutes from the 3:10:25 Village Board meeting.
I do have one correction under the Public Works. Where it says generator replacement maybe next week. That's same again now. But also the SCADA will take until 2026 rather than a long time. Public Works.
Oh, yeah. Any other notations, corrections? Make motion to approve the minutes as presented with the correction.
I will second.
Motion a second and the other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Finance and Personnel?
We will cover number 15.
Thank you. Legislative? Parks, Rec, and Beautification?
I'd like to remind everybody that the Easter Bunny will be visiting up at the Village Hall on Saturday, the 12th. That is a free event for all Lanin residents. At 11:00 AM it starts. And then I'd also like to remind everybody that on May 3rd is the Villagewide Rummage Sale. If you register with me, I will put you on a map and provide maps at all of the locations to help people find all of the participating rummage sales.
How long is the Easter Bunny? Starts at 11:00 and goes till?
She says 11 to 12 because usually people come all like right at the beginning, but I think we'll be here as long as there are kids who want to visit the Easter Bunny.
Okay. When was that rummage sale?
May 3rd. It's Saturday, May 3rd. We're going to try to stick with that first Saturday in May going forward.
Right. Thank you, Colleen. Public Safety?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Public Works for Cycling and Sore.
The SCADA upgrade is underway. We have a meeting end of this week on it. And probably next month, with this cold weather, we're going to hold off a little bit on the pavement, ceiling, and striping in the parking lots. And that's all we got right now.
All right. Thank you. Corey?
Still trying to put together a meeting for the quality farm.
Thank you, Don. Department reports. Clerk's Office?
I'm working on getting utility bills out. I believe I did the readings Friday or today, so I have to go on and get those ready. They should be out by the end of the week. We're tying up our loose ends with the audit and getting a bunch of reporting done in April that are due by the end of April, so.
Did the audit go a little smoother with Workhorse this year?
Yeah, it seemed to go pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
Get nasty report. Yeah, how Brenda was, I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Brenda. Police Department?
Nothing new. We sent out our activity reports. We do have a couple of things coming up. Trying to schedule a CCW class in May, so watch our Facebook page for any postings for that. We do have some recreational safety classes coming up that are being posted here. On June 18th and 19th, we have an ATV safety and motor safety that Officer Schweitzer will be doing.
Thank you. Item number eight, citizen comments. This is meant for public comments on a subject without any discussion by board of trustee members or action except for possible referral to a governmental body or village agent. I've got a, is this Steven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Steven Schpenk. He's 0091 over Stone Drive. My point or my item that I want to bring up is regarding point 14, your discussion date where the rezoning. I'd like to make it, have it be clear and explain at that time, the effect on the tax base. I know part of it is in the tip test and when that would be taken care of. And also eventually what is going to be the effect on services. It's going to require water out there, the emergency service. And as we saw here in the last year, when it came time for the emergency service fee with, that we shared with Benhami Falls, we had quite an increase. You put a high density, if it's senior apartment, senior care facility in there, you're obviously going to build that up and what was that going to be covered through the tax base. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Summers, you had a comment?
I have two comments. One is don't forget to plan Sunday spaghetti dinner from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Lions Club house. And the other comment I have, Patrick said that we got the study back for the developments in the village and this evening, and there's no border between my property and Rock Point had an issue with the dog trading owner down the hill charging my dog in my yard. This is probably the third incident with the same dog. So whatever was in that study, I would like it to be shared so something can be done. Thank you.
Yep, I can send that. I think I can. Yeah, I should be able to send that to you, Don. Any other citizen comments? Thank you. Moving on then. Item number nine. Discussion of possible action on approval of operator's license application for McDougall.
Lieutenant Lane, do you approve this? Chief Golden, chief?
I think it's all good.
She crawled in behind that bar.
Big place.
Yeah.
You must be drinking there a lot, Jim.
So did, did Chief approve this or not? Because I see a few things listed on here.
Yeah, he did approve it. He just listed some things that the applicant did. There weren't anything major.
Yeah, nothing with the drinking.
Right.
Just another unmoved driver.
So why was her license suspended just last month?
Operating laws.
Unregistered vehicle.
Yeah, probably.
Look at speeding unregistered vehicle. Probably that the suspension. Yeah. Three citations, seven, two years.
Maybe she's in walking distance.
Yeah.
Lives upstairs. Well, I don't see a reason not to.
Yeah.
Both with the drinking. That's not.
All right. Well, I will forward a motion that Karli Carini be approved for their application to serve fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors. Both second.
No motion a second and the other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. Discussion of possible action regarding consultant ranking and selection for the WISDOT Transportation Alternative Program funded Villagewide Pedestrian Plan and Safe Route to School Study. No proposal copies are available for viewing at Village Hall. Ben, do you want to walk us through this item and what we went through on Friday?
I can certainly start this off. So the village received funding from Wisconsin DOT to conduct a villagewide pedestrian study and safe routes to school plan. I received contact from DOT right after the March Board meeting saying, hey, you've got to have a contract submitted, a negotiated consultant contract submitted that made first. And we kind of talked through the timing of everything and that RFP had to get sent out on a pretty short order. DOT recommended that the request or proposal for RFP be sent out to their entire roster of firms. I'm not sure how many firms are represented, but there's over 300 contacts on the email list that gets mailed directly to all of them. The village received eight proposals, which was fantastic. DOT likes to see three or more. Given that there were eight proposals received, I felt that it would be really difficult to do a review of all eight proposals within the context of a village board meeting here. Therefore, I asked Patrick if he would be willing to kind of put together a review committee that would be free trustees and therefore not constitute quorum. So Patrick and Jerry and Tina got together on Friday afternoon to review the proposals together and available to answer questions. After scoring the proposals, the highest ranked firm was NSA Professionals. They are. So the selection here is not yet official. The action tonight would be to, I guess if Patrick or Tina or Jerry wanted to make a recommendation to the board to select NSA as the highest ranked firm tool as the second firm, and then Civil Tech as the third, we have to send an official form to DOT letting them know how the proposals were scored and the rank of the top three. And then they have to concur with that. And once they concur, then you can start actually negotiating contract with the highest ranked firm. This was a quality-based selection, so no fee was involved. They want you to, for all DOT-funded projects, that's the same. You pick the highest ranked firm based on the merits of their proposal, and you start negotiating with them. If you cannot reach a successful negotiation with them, then you move on to number two, et cetera, which is why you have to rank the top three. So if any of the three of you would like to add some comments, go ahead, but otherwise ultimately be looking for some action to kind of accept presumably the recommendation of the review committee for ranking the three highest firms.
So the only thing, I guess, that just for the sake of transparency and information for everybody, and correct me if I'm wrong, this was estimated to be $125,000 study, 20% of which would be funded by the village and 80% would be WISDOT ranked.
Correct. And I would say that all eight of them were pretty complete, and it made it kind of difficult to knock it down to these four, but in the end, that's what we did. And we've got three of them that are very close in the score also. Hopefully the DOT will like them.
And that's why we, there's some timing requirements involved with the submission of these, which is why we had to move this meeting up a week so that we could get a decision from the board and get that out to the appropriate authorities.
I looked at the proposals today, this morning when I came in to sign off on timesheets. So my only question is, why have, there's four of them, even though they submitted proposals, there's not even points at all given to them. They're blank.
Yeah, well, we, we just did a, we just did the top four.
Even though you do have all eight.
We just, we just rated the top four because we needed three. And so.
I'll just add that it was apparent to the review committee. Four of them were more generic or boilerplate type proposals. And we're just, it was obvious to the review committee they were going to be like in the bottom. And therefore, the review committee only put the time into reviewing. We came up with five different scoring categories with criteria within each category and a total 100-point ranking system. If you add up all five categories, they just focused their time on what they thought were the top half of the proposals that were received.
Well, I did notice that they were pretty generic.
Some of them were, yeah.
You know, when I was reviewing them this morning, but I was just curious why some of the four didn't even get any points at all. Nothing, not even, I mean, you don't even have to add up to 100.
Yeah, correct. I'll also say DOT advised that you really only have to score the top three. And you're certainly welcome to score all of them, but they needed scores for at least the top three, so.
We looked at them, we just didn't score them.
Okay. But I did notice that they were pretty generic, the ones who didn't score. The other ones were a little more detailed.
That's pretty much where we went with our logical thinking. This is who applied more into giving us in a short amount of time because if you notice, they're all dated April 1st.
Right. They had to be in by April 1st.
Yeah, so we just basically went off of what they had to offer and who actually did their homework and went out and actually mentioned like Jakes and Cars on and, you know, big events that we have here, things that we have here as opposed to just, there you go.
Well, it wasn't just that even. The ones that, that did do their homework, I noticed that they included pictures.
Yes, and that was one.
Photographs of the park where the other ones did not.
And they were current pictures. They just were taken off the internet, so.
I did notice that this morning.
We looked at that.
And thank you.
I guess if no one has any comments that would cause a change in the scoring matrix, you could potentially do the motion to just acknowledge the top three firms based on the scoring matrix that you have.
Okay. I'll make that motion to submit the top three, which would be NSA, Tully, and Civic Tech.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry and Tina, for the extra time. You both get extra credit.
Correct. Well, did you load something in our paycheck there?
You're already signed and delivered.
If you come Saturday, Jerry, you get some free candy.
All right. Item number 11, discussion of possible action regarding condominium flat amendment for Stonewood Trails Development. So again, I'm guessing, which one do you want to go first, Ben or?
I'll go first. You're okay with that?
Sure.
Hopefully everyone has a couple of maps in your packet here. There's a map that has black lines and red lines. Do you happen to have color differences on yours?
Yes.
Yeah. Great. Okay, so I'm getting this up on my computer too because I don't want to switch words here. Yeah. Well, it's really, they, everything's real.
No.
Okay, so on the map that has the black and the red, I believe it's the red lines that were the building footprints and outlines that were originally approved as part of the PUD agreement and as part of the condominium flats. What's actually been built on Gray Street there, which is the first phase, if you will, and what they want to keep building in the second phase is shown in the black lines. Substantively, the changes are, okay, the decks, maybe in a couple of spots, the decks are a little bit bigger over on Gray Street, but otherwise it looks like the garages and the living areas are all the same. That's, that's fine. In Phase Two, because the decks are getting bigger, they're, they're getting just a pinch closer to the property line there. If you look at like Unit 25.
Yeah.
And in Unit 24, they're not encroaching on the 20-foot wide stormwater drainage easement, but they're getting pretty darn close with their deck corners there specifically. And then you can just kind of tell, it looks like in most cases, this has to do with the decks. I would say by units 13 and 14, it looks like the living space is actually getting a little bit deeper or larger also. But, you know, half of the whole front, all the building corners on the front half of the unit are in the same place.
Yeah.
They reached out to me earlier this year and asked, or maybe it was even the building inspector flagged it and asked me if this was okay. The situation is, if this were a single-family housing development, the plat would identify a building pad. And as long as they build their single-family house within this pad area, it conforms. The difference with the condo plat is any of the space outside of the wall at that condo is common area. And therefore, when a condo plat gets recorded, those building corners are exactly documented.
Common area.
So that no one is losing any common area, so to speak. So in practice, these are very minor changes, but they reached out and wanted to know what the process would be for addressing these changes. I looked at the similar situation that we had for Overstone. I forget if it was Phase 1B or if it was Phase 2, but in Overstone, a building corner changed a little bit. And for that, we went through an actual plat amendments. Now, the situation here is, of course, they by and large, this wasn't caught until they submitted building permits. The building inspector flagged it to me. You could infer from that they're wanting to keep going on building units here. And the process to amend the plat can take a couple of months going through the various village procedures. What you'll see in your packet here is just an email exchange that Hector and I have had on this issue. But because this is a PUD, the zoning and the developer agreement are kind of one in the same procedurally. The zoning is the development agreement. The development agreement is the zoning. Zoning changes require a public hearing. So my suggestion for a path forward, and not everyone has to agree. Hector will weigh in here. My suggestion for a path forward was if we took conditional action on this tonight, and I would recommend conditional approval, the builders can keep building these units at their own risk while they go through the procedures. You'll see in the email exchange, Hector noted that's not very common and requested certain indemnification be provided so that if quote-unquote "at your own risk" happens to blow up in their face, they don't come back to the village and and try to sue the village for letting them continue to build things that were not in accordance with the current recorded condo plat while they're working through these procedures. I'll get into a little bit later what some recommend, recommended conditions would be, but I also want to point out something else in email here. And that is there is a line or a paragraph in the amendment that talks, I'm sorry, in the agreement that talks about amendments. And I would actually like to read this paragraph. The Village Board and developer by mutual consent may amend this agreement upon the full execution and the recording of any such amendment with registered deeds. Village Board shall not, however, consent to amendment until after first having received recommendation from the Build Client Commission. None of the filings shall require an amendment to this agreement. One, minor building variations that alter the interior of each building's footprint area by no more than temporary. One, minor building variations that alter the interior of each building's footprint area by no more than ten percent to increase or decrease the same as shown on the building plan submitted for a building permit. Two, minor variations to materials in accordance with architectural plans as shown on exhibit F. And as may be approved by the village building inspector in consultation with the village engineer, provided such changes are contemporaneously documented in writing. Three, minor deviations to the attached exhibits if conditions encountered during construction warrant a change that is reviewed by the building inspector and in consultation with the village engineer and documented. Such deviations shall be requested by the developer in writing with proposed plan revisions and approved in writing by the building inspector. If any changes require a change in the PUD agreement, then the developer will be required to obtain such change in accordance with the PUD ordinances. Now, I want to break this down a little bit in layman's terms for what I think is happening. The changes that are requested do not amount to more or less than ten percent, these are very minor changes. This would not require an amendment to the developer agreement. But four, it's a condo plat, which is very rigid and specific, and these changes need to get recorded in a revised condo plat, no matter what. The condo plat is an exhibit to the PUD agreement. The PUD agreement is the zoning, the zoning is the PUD agreement. So inadvertently, we're kind of caught in a little bit of a circular argument here of what the correct procedure is. Again, if this were a single family, um, this wouldn't even be coming to board. Um, it would fall within the building inspector's right to just kind of approve a minor variation. But because of this domino effect of needing to change a plat, et cetera, I won't say it all again. The reason why this is coming to village board tonight is that the ordinance says that plats get approved by the village board. But zoning goes through plan commission first. So we're also caught in a bit of a circular procedural loop that way. Um, so therefore, kind of, again, my recommendation is if the board were willing to entertain uh, conditional approval of these things, we could list off some conditions, and then this can work itself through the process of going to plan commission because it's a zoning related thing. Go to a public hearing, come back to plan commission, go to the village board for final action, and then record.
Ben, do you know what their schedule is to start the second phase, they're still doing earthwork and stuff?
I do not know what their schedule to start is. Hector, do you want to?
Uh, first of all, when I got the request, uh, it struck me that it was an unusual thing. But at the same time, uh, I felt that if they could save some time with mobilization costs, uh, it would be beneficial in the long run for the village uh, to approve the continuous work taking place, provided that the village uh, is not exposed to liability. Uh, in a condo, as uh, you know, uh, there are two kinds of areas. The uh, common area, and Ben has indicated in a subdivision of that called limited common area, which are areas that are not within the unit itself per se, but they are dominated by the unit and oftentimes built for the exclusive use of the unit owner. I sat down and read, reread the development agreement, and the unit is defined by the interior wall of each particular unit. At the time that the first uh, PUD agreement was negotiated, um, they indicated that they did not know exactly what the market would require in terms of garage space or unit space, but that they were determined to build this in a continuous fashion in two stages, with one particular phase, so um, then the notation of phase one and phase two, I believe, is not quite accurate. It it should be deleted as such because it's not consistent with the development agreement. Now, uh, I uh, recommended that in exchange for the village accommodating their request to continue building while the legal formalities are met, that they enter into an indemnification agreement, which basically would obligate not only the developer, which is an LLC, but also a principal owner of that to guarantee to the village that in the event of a lawsuit that could be brought in theory against them, but also against the village for allowing this to take place, that they would be responsible for the payment of any damages awarded or uh, or any attorney fees involved. And the reason for my concern was that uh, the changes are slight, but they can affect the use and enjoyment of the units depending on what unit you're talking about. And this is not something that a first time buyer or an initial purchaser of these condo units would appreciate. But once everything is developed and there's a turnover of ownership, uh, there would be uh, and the requirement from some lenders that there be a survey submitted, and in effect, what they're asking is for a modification of the overall survey of the development here. Uh, and at that point, it might be caught, so they agreed to all of the proposed changes that I put forth, including uh, a willingness to uh, stand by that uh, indemnification for a period of ten years following the approval of this. Uh, and uh, given that, I I do not see a legal obstacle to this, it's more of a policy decision on the part of the board. Uh, in my experience, this sort of thing uh, does not happen. Uh, but uh, it has happened in this village, and the village is very um, determined to uh, realize the increase in property values in the village and make more housing available within the village, so with that, I I do not see any legal objection, provided that they turn over the executed development agreement, excuse me, indemnification agreement uh, as we have negotiated it with their attorney.
Do we have a copy of that yet, or is that still in draft form being reviewed?
I do not have a final copy, I did not bring it with me. Uh, but it does exist and it's been signed off by their attorney, in fact. The last communication I received from their attorney was that they would have uh, Mr. Sawall uh, execute the document and they would deliver it to the village, but I understand that has not occurred yet. So that should be one of the conditions that should be added to this conditional approval. The delivery of the indemnification agreement as agreed between the attorneys. And I would defer to Ben for the suggestion of any other conditions.
I would say the striking of the phase one and phase two, as you pointed out.
Um, I've actually been typing up some conditions over here.
Hey, Sheriff.
I do, I just can't talk and chew gum at the same time. Um, okay, I'm ready uh, to read this, the question did come up on the email chain about whether or not uh, the issuance of building permits can continue. So I'm I'm gonna take a crack at reading the whole recommended action and the conditions. Recommend approval of the proposed condominium plat and allow the developer to continue construction with normal building permit issuance, conditioned upon the following. One, address the village engineer's comments on the condominium plat. Two, provide indemnification for a ten year period as requested by the village attorney. Three, amend the PUD agreement following the villagers' procedures to reflect the changes, including striking references to phase one and phase two and replacing any modified exhibits. Or amend the condominium declarations to reflect the changes. Five, that any amended documents be recorded with the registrar of deeds.
Hector? Yes, I'll make that a motion.
I will email this to you.
So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I think we need a timeline in here, this has to be completed by. And if not, there's gotta be substantial price to pay. Um, I'm familiar with how this started in the original paperwork turned in, that in uh, protect the village with this liability insurance. And as a board member, it's covered the villages, but is our primary response to the village. And I want to make sure that's done because of the history of this.
Hector.
I would suggest particularly, uh, given the history that uh, no occupancy permits, final occupancy permits can be granted until this amendment process is completed.
Yeah, phase one, two.
For the entire.
There are no phases technically. So before they, before any new structures get granted occupancy.
Could we potentially tie that to
certain unit numbers?
Certain unit numbers.
Or building numbers.
I'm reluctant to suggest that because this uh, plat change affects the units in the new section and the old section now.
Yeah, I bring it up because frankly, I don't know which um, if any units are occupied.
Yeah, I think the new section is already, I mean, yeah, for sale. Building one and two, and I know that they put meters in three, four and five, of three and four. But they didn't get them? They applied for occupancy or?
One and two have been grounded.
Yeah, that's the first two that we made.
Uh, for context, I expect this process to reasonably take two to three months. And if we were to pick a timeframe, I would pick four. But um, I'm just not aware, I if say someone in unit three was expecting to take occupancy next month, and now they've got to wait three more months.
Well, those units don't really have any major change, if you look at this with the red line versus the black line. Really take place in in the newer, the ones that haven't been built yet.
Units eleven through thirty two, thirty two.
Building six through sixteen.
And you pointed out Ben, unit twenty four and twenty five being so close to that alliance, but so is fourteen. Fourteen's right on its corner, and it's like, if if we grant a um, a conditional and then it's not, how are you gonna change that?
There's about one solution for that, and that's tear it up.
Uh, that's what I was thinking, but fifteen will be fine. No, no, thirteen will be fine, it'd be fourteen that's the corner.
Correct, and really it would be the deck. So they would have to modify the deck.
Same thing with eleven?
Um, yep, that's the stairs on the deck that are right up to that twenty foot.
There enough drainage and stuff back there?
Yes. That twenty foot easement is the drainage.
What's happened with us, that's why I'm questioning that.
Did these have basements?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes, not walkout basements, they have lookout basements.
Uh, so that I am clear, at this point, do you know Brenda, how many occupancy permits have been issued? From the email chain, I was under the impression that they were not at that point where they could issue occupancy permits.
Yeah, you know the answer.
I don't think one was issued occupancy um, quite a while ago. Yeah, they have, yeah, this, there was no issue at that time. I think two, I think two followed after, three and four do not have occupancy.
Because all of those really don't have any.
Completely separate. The street is separate, everything is separate.
But the buildings don't really have any, any changes.
The buildings that have the tightest adjustments are the one and the other, the other phase.
Well, do we want to consider a uh, in addition to additional condition or clarification to the motion to specify?
In reality, though, uh, those units are more than three months away from even being built.
It's not gonna be an issue over there, I'm not concerned about these.
Problem with them though.
So the 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 modified motion would be to add, Ben?
I'm just adding a sixth condition. And you can do with it what you want, but just so you know, it would be a sixth condition, either no occupancy permits can be granted until blank, or a straight up condition that this be done within a certain timeframe.
Or the thought that occupancy permits for buildings.
On stone lane, yeah, stone lane can't be accepted in the occupancy, Gray Street. They're all done, they can be occupied.
So the the occupancy permit restriction would be for the buildings um, for units number eleven through thirty two. Could we do that, Ben?
That's more of a Hector question, I think he raises a valid point that you know, the condo plat is technically going to amend the common area with shared ownership for everybody, so I think that's a bit of a I want to defer to Hector on this.
I, I do not think that imposing a three month or four month deadline is meaningful, given the history that we had in just getting to the final signing and recording of the initial PUD agreement. Because assume that you're five months out and they still haven't because they haven't gotten the facts correct, gotten the approval. That forces the village to try to start some kind of enforcement action. And the first thing that they're gonna say is, where is the PUD? Is there a penalty or enforcement? Is there a penalty or enforcement provision? And so the village is really chasing its tail in this regard. If you want to carve out number of units that you think. Should reasonably be relieved of this restriction for three or four months. That would be the more practical way to do it. Uh rather than a whole set of buildings. So.
Can I ask a a rudimentary question? What precipitated this change? Is it just the desire to have a more marketable property? Um that they decided to increase the size of the debt, or? Does it also affect the footprint of the enclosed space, Ben?
There's at least one building that the size of the enclosed space. Uh is affected. I don't know what drove that, obviously what must have happened is there was some architectural change after the development agreement was completed and before they started. Pulling builder per building permits. And I have to admit, the paragraph that I read about amendments and what doesn't require an amendment. I recall the intent, but in practice procedurally, it doesn't work. You know, certainly, again, the changes that they proposed are less than ten percent area, et cetera. Um but. It it would have been contemplated that this would also require a platform and so. I I can't even, I don't know exactly the answer to your question, but. I, this was kind of a last minute issue that. Uh I gathered, just based on my conversation with the developer, and you can take that. For whatever value you want. They certainly didn't know that these changes were outside of what was allowed in the developer agreement based on that paragraph.
Well, I think. For for me, what I would hate to do is for us to take some sort of action that might adversely impact. Families that are. Pro- possibly already well into negotiations and plans to move into some of these units that are going to be. Getting getting occupancy permits in the very near future, I would, I would hate to to do that, especially given that. There's little to zero change on these initial five buildings as it is.
It's possible. That a, somebody looked at these units and said, oh, I wish I could have a larger patio, and they went, let's try.
I don't it.
I don't know that it really even matters. What drove this?
Hector, your recommendation is to go ahead and put the restriction, or not the restriction, but to say that all of this has to be executed within um. The engineers uh proposed four months, but we could exclude uh units one through ten from that, is that? Is, did I understand you correctly?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think. Cleaner way would be no further occupancy. Permits to be issued beyond units one to ten until. This amendment process is completed.
And in that way, the construction can move along, we can get it into this year. Um there's. Benefits for that to happen.
Okay, so here's how I've drafted that sixth condition. No occupancy permits for units eleven through thirty two can be granted until the amendment process is complete.
I'll amend my motion for that.
Does the plan permission have to see this again?
Yes. Twice.
And and a public hearing, I believe, right?
Public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, I expected, but I didn't know.
Planning commission, public hearing, planning commission. Pulling back here.
And none of this would happen, it's here totally. Affects units one to ten. So that.
They're already.
Nothing's being held up.
I honestly was quite encouraged by them coming in and pulling the permits for all of these. Structures right away at the beginning of the year, I believe they pulled them and paid for them all, right?
They have.
In January, so. They're they're hot to, hot to trot. So we have an amended motion and amended second, do we have any other discussion? One more thing.
I recommend that the developers be encouraged to show up. At the public hearing and be available to provide answers to questions that we can only speculate about.
Yeah, that's good feedback. Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve. Discussion of possible action regarding the twenty twenty six budget commitment to cover village costs for a stormwater management plan update. Up to eighty five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the total project cost contingent that the W D N R urban non-point source planning grant. Is awarded to the village. So Ben, we had a phone call today with Isaac and a couple of the folks from the D N R. Wanna recap that?
Yes, certainly, you'll recall at the, I believe it was just at the March meeting, there was a resolution that was passed authorizing the. Uh village clerk to submit that application when it's prepared, the application deadline is April fifteenth. We talked about in past meetings, including authorizing Strand to work on the preparation of the grants. Um that this is an update to the village-wide stormwater quality management plan. And that D N R is working on a total maximum daily load study of the Fox River. To which Lannan is tributary, um and they are coming out with. Their revised kind of permit requirements that would impact. Lannan um later this summer, approximately August, so. Uh we talked in the past, this study is something that the village is gonna have to go through no matter what. Every other year, um there is a planning grant available that covers fifty percent. The maximum grant amount is eighty five thousand. In which case, the village would have to provide eighty five thousand matching funds for a total project cost of one hundred and seventy thousand. Um we're still honing in on what the exact cost is going to be, but it's gonna, I think the full scope of it is closer to. One hundred to one hundred and twenty thousand, not the full one hundred and seventy. But part of the grant application process is that we will need a letter signed by the clerk acknowledging that. Basically, if the grant is awarded, then the village will cover its fifty percent cost. Now, in reality, uh the village has up to three years after award. Um to do the study, and so that might not fall hit right away in twenty twenty six. But the way that D N R structures these is they want to see some kind of a commitment. Um that you would be ready, ready to go in uh year one.
Would Strand be doing the study, much like we did back in two thousand and six or whatever?
Um that would be the intent, but again, if the bills so chose to go out to request for proposal or whatever, that's certainly an option.
Yeah, but that's how we got you.
That's right, so we're generating the the scope and the fee on what we feel is in the village's best interest. And we're certainly not precluded from doing the work.
Ben, does Sussex have to get involved in this because we are hooked up to them?
Um so this is a little bit different, this is just the stormwater. Um so, no, they don't.
What's the action?
Um the action is kind of written in with the um. Agenda language here. If you make that action, then we have a draft letter that we can send over to Brenda that kind of reflects the same. And then we'll include that with the grant application.
Are you looking for a on motion for the twenty twenty six budget commitment?
Yes.
Do we have time to get in since it's January the fifteenth?
Yes, this is kind of the last piece as a matter of fact. We've gotten letter, we had just even solicit letters of support from other. Entities and we got them from the Waxahaw County Green Team, from Sewer Pack and I think there was a third also.
All right, well, I will forward a motion that the Village of Lannan Village Board make a twenty twenty six budget commitment. To cover the village costs for a stormwater management plan update. Up to eighty five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the total project cost. Contingent that the W D N R Urban Nonprofit Source Planning Grant is awarded to the village.
I'll second that.
Motion a second, I'll just make a correction that that's the non-point source. Alright, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
The way the notice reads. Uh the village is committing to budget eighty five thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. Or fifty percent of the total project cost, who should the total project cost be? Two hundred thousand. The village is committing to that.
So we'd like to uh include in the motion a cap to not exceed eighty five thousand, maybe should we say? Since Ben has already said that he feels like the eighty five thousand is already a concern of numbers.
Yeah, eighty five thousand, so eighty five thousand was listed because that's essentially the maximum grant amount. So, under no scenario would we recommend a scope here that would exceed that total hundred and seventy thousand dollar. Project cost, which would be maxing out your eighty five thousand dollar grant. Uh that's why we said up to eighty five thousand or fifty percent of the total project cost. What's gonna happen is um. We've got a draft letter and we're going to include. Uh by the end of this week, we'll know the exact dollar amount, let's say it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and. Twenty three cents. We'll say, the letter will say fifty percent of that. For end, you know, whatever that dollar value is. For the sake of this board action, that commitment's not gonna be any higher than eighty five thousand.
So Hector, are you okay if I amend my motion to say not to exceed eighty five thousand dollars?
Yes.
So moved.
I'll amend my second. So we have an amended motion and an amended second. Um additional discussion, I will just ask, how do we reconcile this? I know this has come up. Many other times in the past about. A board cannot um hold a future board to a commitment.
Yes.
So how do we reconcile that in this type of situation?
Well, there's another rule that applies, the board should not commit to a contract. Without having the funds in hand.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess, I'm so bad in ways.
We would not be making this motion were it not for a requirement, correct? You know.
Yeah, right, I assume that's a loophole. Not really.
Grant, we have to commit.
I would suggest that. Because more information is forthcoming, the best thing to do is communicate to the W D O P. When the D N R, whoever is issuing these funds. Um a copy of the motion. That the board pass this motion and hopefully um. Information will be made available, generally, the sanction that the D N R has. If a condition is not met, they withhold the issuance of the grant themselves.
The cart and the horse.
Okay, um so for that sake, could you, could someone please repeat the motion? And I'll type it up here to make sure it's in that letter.
All right, so my motion reads. That the Village of Lannan Village Board of Trustees. Um recommends for the twenty twenty six budget year. To commit to not in excess of eighty five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the total project cost. Contingent that the W D N R Urban Nonpoint Source Planning Grant is awarded to the village.
May want it had had to project cost in parentheses not to exceed eighty five thousand dollars. Both parentheses.
All right. Twenty twenty six budget commitment to cover village costs for a stormwater management plan update. Up to eighty five thousand, well, I said not to exceed eighty five thousand or fifty percent of the total project cost. Contingent on the W D N R Urban Nonpoint Source Plan, awarding to, awarded to the village.
Yeah, revised, revised, revised. Motion.
What is the um? It's saying contingent upon um that they are awarding the grant to us, what happens if it doesn't?
Then we're not.
Then we're not on the hook.
We don't do anything.
We don't do it.
So we have longer period of time. Yeah.
Just have more time.
Correct, so part of the objective here is to complete this study ahead of the deadline.
April fifteenth.
Well, no, that's the grant application, but if the grant is successful. Then we'll take on a study. And say, complete that study, just generally speaking, by the end of twenty twenty six or the middle of twenty twenty seven or something. The requirements might not have to be met until twenty twenty nine. So if you don't get the grant. We would recommend wait two more years, apply for the grant again. The trick is next grant cycle, the grant's gonna be a lot more competitive. Because there's plenty of municipalities out there that just take the stance of, I won't do anything until you make me. Whereas it's more advantageous to get in now while the grant is less competitive. That's kind of the thought process here, so it's not awarded. You're not at a point yet where you're risking being out of compliance. If you go one more cycle and it's not awarded again, then you'd probably have to move forward without. The grant funds manager.
So we had an amended motion and then we have an amended second?
Couple times.
Yeah, a couple of times, okay, any other discussion, any questions and comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding preparation, preparation of the municipal separate storm sewer system, M S four annual report, this is a annual. Mandatory filing requirement, is this the downfall?
Um that's part of it, so the M S four annual report, you have to document what public outreach activities you did last year. Um you have to document um what, what uh quantity of salt was put on the roads last year. Um what number of inspections, erosion people inspections, did the building inspector do? What were the violations, what were the follow up on those violation actions, whatever? So we just have to pull that together into a form. Um and submit that to D N R. So I apologize, that's due March thirty first every year, and we missed that. The D N R extended that till April eighteenth. I talked to our staff that did it last year for the village and they're confident we could get it done by this extension, April eighteenth. Um I believe last year we spent, uh I think we asked last year for approximately. Four thousand dollars just to be billed on our on-call agreement, and I think we ended up spending closer to three. I haven't. Put an estimate to our level of effort, other than to say it'll be comparable, if not a little bit. Put an estimate to our level of effort other than to say it'll be comparable, if not a little bit less effort than last year.
Do you do any outfall sampling? I know some years ago we did.
Yeah, you have to screen those on certain intervals and it's not every single year.
Okay.
And you kind of screen them to identify your high priority ones, like downstream of a particular. Uh, dare I say suspected violator?
Yeah.
Where you would actually take water quality samples.
Yeah.
Um, the, the initial screening is just a visual.
Yeah. I know many years ago I went out in a rainstorm and.
Sure.
Looked at the outfall. It said it was clear water.
There you go. Yep.
Okay.
All right, so what you're looking for is for a, um, authorization for strand to prepare the, um. To prepare the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS four annual report, um. At a cost not to exceed four thousand dollars, um, and to be completed, uh, honor before April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Right?
Correct.
So, so moved.
Well, second then.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, uh, discussion of possible action to set a public hearing date before the rezoning application for LENV zero zero three two four nine five. Located as approximately one nine one one five West Main Street from A-one agricultural to institutional.
Well, I don't know this time.
Um, so. I, yeah, this was on the plan commission meeting, both, um. Attorney Dale Moore and I were absent from the last meeting. Uh, as you're starting to get into Jerry, there's a notice requirement.
Right.
Uh, where individual letters have to be sent to properties within a three hundred foot radius.
Yep.
For a public hearing. Um, and since there was a comment on this during public comment. The intent of this step on this development agreement is that they have asked. Uh, the property owner and the developer have submitted a joint application and have asked. Um, that conditional zoning be granted to change this from agricultural to institutional. They want to see that done as an initial step. And then they will come back and submit development plans, developer agreement, et cetera. Their whole separate approval processes. Um. For those steps and a lot of the questions that were raised will absolutely need to be vetted. Um, as part of that process. Uh, the developer and the property owner have asked for this conditional rezone happen. Um, I'll put it in my words, Patrick, and maybe you can expound on this, uh, as kind of a. Step that would help their financing group have confidence before they authorize. Their group to spend all the money on engineering and architecture, et cetera, that. Um, it's a viable use for this site. Um, and as, I'll, I'll just reiterate what was in my memo for plan commission. Um, the comprehensive land use plan is kind of a broad umbrella. That defines what specific zoning classifications may be appropriate for a particular property. Um, in this, for this parcel, I would. Suggest that the institutional zoning, which is being requested here, is the most restrictive. Technically, senior living could happen within the village ordinances, uh, either under institutional. Or under multifamily. We very much wanted the, uh, developer to pursue institutional. So that would just minimize the potential in the future for there to be some type of bait and switch, so to speak. Um. They're fine with the conditions, including, you know, getting, uh, approved developer agreement. Um, closing on the land, all the normal things. Um. So basically, even if they get conditional zoning approval. If they don't get an acceptable developer agreement, a development plan, et cetera. Then that zoning kind of goes away.
Yeah, falls back if it doesn't.
Falls back to A-one agricultural.
Yep.
I think there's an argument to be made and it's just my opinion. If the village move forward with rezoning without conditions. That would be the re- most restrictive use. Basically, that's the only thing that could be built there. That might not be in the best interest for all the other. Equations and way of looking at this, including what was brought up earlier tonight, so I'm not advocating you do that. Uh, quite frankly, the property owner itself has asked that the rezoning be conditional. And that's because if this deal ends up falling through, they don't want to be stuck having to rezone it to something else.
Hector, I think that's right for us too, isn't it? Rather than rezone it institutional and then it collapses?
Right, however, I think the conditional rezoning should be that it does not kick in. Until those conditions have been satisfied.
Agreed.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, so sorry to get into all that, but since there was a public comment, I wanted to, uh, expound on that a little bit. We just need to set the date.
Yep.
I do have one question. Did any developer ever come forward? Um, other than the one for assisted living that, you know, that would put in residential homes?
No.
Affordable, uh, residential homes, was that, did anybody come forward with that?
I had a, I had a meeting with them and a developer, uh, who wanted to put in these big fancy apartments.
Yep.
No, I'm not talking apartments, I'm talking.
I'm just telling you what I, you asked a question, if we had anybody, anybody come forward and want to do anything else, that was something that.
And the property owner some years ago wanted to put in storage buildings. You asked.
No, I know, I'm asking, you're right.
Yeah, I, I agree with Patrick. Um, I believe there were two different entities. Um, only one of which talked to you, Patrick, the other one was, maybe it was the same. The other one was also for apartments. And they wanted to do age restricted to like fifty-five or over. And, uh, we tried to cordially burst that balloon. Again, I just. Uh. Didn't want to subject the village to a potential bait and switch. Um, but quite frankly, as I put in my memo last, for the last meeting. Um, really getting into the comp plan, a lot of land area was shown as a planned neighborhood use. With a proposed breakdown of different types of single-family, two-family, multi-family, whatever. The Sawal Project, Rock Point Village, kind of used up the balance, so to speak, of the target. Um, mixed development for that whole north end of town.
Cause I know that area, um, at times had, is floods. There's flooding that goes on there, so whoever builds in there is going to have to build up that land.
Sure.
Number one, number two, you have high-power electrical towers. That are right in there and it's never been proven yes, and it's never been proven no. That it gives off radiation and some families seem to think that that it does, but never has been proven either way.
Yep, oh, and we'll get into all of that as we progress throughout the development specifics. Um, I know they've been in front of a plan commission a couple of times in the past, just for. Conceptual plan reviews to give an idea of the. Scale, the type of building, the building materials, where within the site they would be building, et cetera. Um, I also want to point out, just because density was brought up. Um. Senior living facility density is allowable up to eighteen units per acre. And there's something like thirteen acres there, so technically, they could be entitled to, you know, over two hundred. Units or two hundred beds. The proposal is on the order of.
Fifty-six.
I thought it was twenty-two.
No, it, it's at least fifty-six. I think they might have taken a look at a concept revision to get up to seventy or seventy-two. So this is, you know, planned at about a fourth of the allowable density. For that type of facility.
So at the plan commission, we did discuss with them that the property needs to be filled.
I was at the meeting.
Yeah.
Um. So in order to, it's fifteen days, Brenda, for a public hearing?
Which it wouldn't be able to get to the paper till the sixteenth. At this rate, so it would have.
Wouldn't get to the paper until the sixteen?
It could, it wouldn't be published, it would be published in the, the paper on the sixteenth. Because I could, I can't get it in the paper for two days from now.
And we have to have two, two publications.
Um, well, fifteen days, so the sixteenth, yeah, the twenty-third, so. Be made first-ish would be the earliest. So if it's published on the sixteenth and the twenty-third. The board meeting for May would be the twelfth.
Yeah. Uh.
Fifteen days would be May eighth. Right, from the twenty-third.
So we could, I mean, it's, we can set the public hearings in the May twelfth board meeting, right? And, and would we need a joint village board and plan commission meeting, right?
Yes.
May twelfth.
We have a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Do you want to formulate that, uh, that, that motion there?
Four letters.
Yeah.
And that's all the, the action was.
Yeah, yep, we just need to.
Don't have to read it again.
Schedule the public hearing. All right, so we have a motion to, uh, schedule the public hearing for the conditional rezoning application for LENV zero zero three two four nine five. Located approximately one nine one one five West Main Street from A-one agricultural to I institutional. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
We have a first and a, a motion and a second for May twelfth public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion of possible action on payment of the bills.
I need a motion that we pay the bills as was presented by Brenda.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills as presented by the clerk. Any other discussion? Questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, engineers report.
Nothing further.
Item seventeen, attorney's report.
Nothing further.
Uh, president's report. First of all, uh, happy birthday, Mr. Wood. This will be, uh, Jerry, this is. Maybe in close. Almost the conclusion of, uh, Jerry and Anna's last meeting here, so I would like to thank them for their time and their commitment to serve the village. Much appreciated and we'll keep your name placards in the event that we see you up here again sometime. Uh, I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Baptiste and Mr. Willard on their successful elections. Going to be asked in the next one. Um, there's also a public information meeting that will be held on Saturday, the third. It's a lot of stuff going on because we've got the Roman sale as well on that day. Um, I think we're gonna have to do the public information meeting in the garage that day. Because apparently Sunny Side has a meeting in this room on that day already scheduled. I thought, I thought Amy said they have.
I can't remember if it was the first.
It'd be somewhere here in village hall. Okay, and that will be to, uh, get public feedback on the. Conceptual draft of the pocket park. Um, I don't know if it's still posted up there. Okay, so you can take a look at that on your way out, but we would like to get some public feedback on that.
Do you have a time that you want to do that on the third?
Yep, ten to noon, thank you. Ten to noon, I will put out a. A post on social media as well and get a postcard out a little closer to that. That's all I have. Uh, item number.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, make convening into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes one nine point eight five. One G for the purpose of confirming with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body. With respect to litigation, which is likely to become involved in with respect to failure of certain properties connected to available municipal laws. Service and village landed by the commencement of enforcement actions, seeking the imposition of fines and or injunction compelling their connection.
I made a motion that we convene into closed session.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote.
Yes.
Calatola Roby.
Yes.
Newman, yes. Moore.
Yes.
Vanir.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Yates is yes. In case somebody wants to come in and watch us make our motion to adjourn.
Dan is here. No, no.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Second.
You cut me off.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.